To order the Westmont Village Board meeting at September 23rd, 2021 to order at 6:00 PM. And ask Clerk Sibski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunter?
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Simonovic?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
Assistant Village Manager Parker?
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. The first item is, of course, our open forum, and I do have a request. If there's anybody else who'd like to address the board for an item that's not on the agenda, now's the time to raise your hands. If not, I do have one. We have one request from Stephen. Stephen, huh? Fleck, yeah, there he is. For crossing guards, the podium is yours.
Stephen Fleck, I have a son that goes to Manning. Obviously, there's been a lot of talk about the crossing guard situation. I understand, even a little bit more now talking to chief, that part of the budget for the crossing guards that is contracted with Anne, Annie Frank, some of that comes from the police department budget, some of that maybe comes from the school, wherever else. I guess half of it comes from them. But I also understand that it's hard to put a police officer on that corner because they don't have a regular schedule. They never know when a call is going to come in, and they're going to have to leave in the middle of it. They have a shortage, just like we do in restaurants and other industries, of getting employees, I guess, to be crossing guards. So right now, we don't have a regular crossing guard at, say, Naperville Road and Cass Avenue. And then some days, they have shortages of people coming in. We were just at Norfolk the other day walking our kid to school when there was a little girl on a bike, and if I didn't reach out and grab her backpack, she probably would have been hit. I don't know. Did go to the school district, just so you know. Their hands are somewhat tied because this is a contracted thing already for this, and I asked why teachers can't do it, and they said they only work certain hours between this time and this time, and it's prior to school, and there's probably union contracts, all kinds of stuff. Suggestion, but maybe there's a way to get the village board involved to say, how can we get the safety of these kids taken care of on a regular daily basis? And I'm sure it's probably going to get worse in the winter on a slushy, icy day or something. But, and we have less buses, too, so there's more kids walking. Is there a way to use street department people, water department, village staff, something? We can't always rely on volunteers coming in because people's schedules, but if we have village staff or something, then if the budget money that's in there can be relocated to cover the street department people's time, it's not a long time, it's just the daily commitment. So I don't know if there's a way, something can be discussed about that in the future, and we can figure this out. That's it.
Thank you. And I do know that this is something that police department, we've had, we've been looking at it, and we have a meeting set up for next week with Superintendent to look at it further. You know, there's a lot of other options, too, you know. It's a shared thing with the school district, and I know the chief has kind of notified them several months ago that this is coming, and they should take a look at it. So we're going to meet with Superintendent, President of Board, manager, myself, next week, and we're going to look at different options. So, all right, thank you. I will close open forum and move on to reports. And my report's the first one. The, we had a police public safety committee meeting yesterday, and we had a lot of recognition. I don't know if chief, you want to mention any of them, or just any highlight that yesterday morning, we held it here. We had some very nice honors bestowed on some of our officers for things they did.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. We had several awards that were handed out, and off the top of my head, I'll see if I can recall most of them. We gave investigative age, Angela White had a chief recognition commendation for her work on this year's squad car night, which was extremely well-attended. She did an unbelievable job before, during, and after the event, and so she was recognized. We recognized Officer Greg Hausner for a traffic stop several months ago, which resulted in the arrest of the driver of the vehicle for possession of a handgun. So that person was charged with an unlawful use of weapon. We had an award for Officer John Longini, who back in July discovered a five-month-old baby who was strapped in a car seat in a vehicle in a parking lot, unattended, very hot night, window was open, doors were unlocked, baby was crying. Officer Longini discovered the baby and tracked down the caretaker, arrested the caretaker for endangerment to the child, and called the fire department to make sure the child was well taken care of from a medical perspective. And finally, we awarded, I believe, six officers, two sergeants and four officers. Five out of the six received chief commendation, and the sixth officer, Officer Sam Salvedo, received a life-saving award, and this is referenced in incident that happened on the railroad tracks about a month ago, where a person tried to commit suicide, and our officers were called. Very dynamic situation. Obviously, you have metro trains, you have freight trains going east and west, you have vehicular traffic, pedestrians. The search was on, and the six officers coordinated together, found the person on the railroad tracks as a freight train was approaching, and removed the person from the tracks so they could be transported to the hospital. All unbelievable work by our officers. You know, we can't highlight their great work enough, protecting the citizens of Westmont.
Thank you. And there's a couple events coming up, prescription drugs, takeback?
Oh, man, you're really testing my brain.
October 23rd.
We do. We have drug takeback, and we have the shred event. You'll have to correct me on the dates, but they're on Saturdays, and they're coming up in October.
Yes, October 30th is the shred event, and the 23rd is the drug takeback. Thank you. And Chief Riley, if you were there, you want to give any COVID-19 update?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, the numbers continue to rise and not in our favor. DuPage County, 104,138, along with 1,436 deaths. Numbers in Westmont continue to rise, as the fire department just had three positive COVID cases, not in the station, but calls on Monday. Our current cases in Westmont is 2,609, and unfortunately, 91 deaths, which is two new deaths in Westmont since I gave the board a report two weeks ago, and 42 new cases in the last 14 days. So we continue to see the uptick. Unfortunately, we continue to see numerous people in restaurants and gatherings and local establishments without masks, but we need to continue to do what I've said for about 18 months, is continue to social distance, wearing a face covering and washing of hands, and hopefully, we'll be able to get through this. We are starting to see it, the hospitalizations drop down a few points, which is good, but the positive number around DuPage County right now is about 4.7. So we need to continue to do the right thing and lower those numbers. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Couple items on 100th anniversary, November 10th, that's the actual birthday for the village, it's 100 years. So make sure you set aside that date. There'll be a lot of, there'll be a new time capsule, will be a dedication ceremonies, will announcement of our legacy awards, both for families and businesses. There'll be music fireworks and a lot of things. So keep that date open and look for the itinerary for that day. Our commemorative ceramic plates are on sale now. There's a limited supply for our plates, and visit our website to learn more and to place your order. All the money proceeds will go to the Greg House Historical Society. Our 100th anniversary license plates, we will be receipt of the plates next week, and then we'll schedule pickup for those who ordered the collector's license plates. And again, the Greg House Museum had their anniversary celebration this past Sunday. They had heirs of Mr. Greg come in from Florida, and they were very accommodating, very surprised they were related. Jenny and Marie was at the breakfast with them. They came into town, they, and again, Alice, the museum curator, had them at breakfast. We had an opportunity to talk to them, and then they had a ceremony at the museum. So they celebrated their 40th anniversary. That's when they became a state-recognized historical building, and thanks to the Smichael family and the Felses, who really worked hard to get that museum moved from the church property to the Veterans Memorial Park. So congratulations on them for 40 years and coincide with our 100th. So that's all I have. Clerk Sibski?
Well, I have a great one, too. So it's, congratulations to Westmont High School for being named one of 18 Illinois schools, being recognized as National Blue Ribbon Schools. National Blue Ribbon Schools get this special honor based on academic performance or programs' closing achievement gaps. Well done, Westmont High School. I think we all can be proud of that high school.
And I think both Hinsdale High Schools were on that, too, I believe. I know Hinsdale Central was.
Hinsdale Central.
Yes, so congratulations.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Also, I just wanted to think about the family that, or Mr. Valerio that died, and the Valerio family, so giving a thoughts out to them.
All right, thank you. Trustee Brady?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next planning and zoning committee meeting is scheduled for October 13th, and regarding the new building on the corner of One Northwest Quincy is now under roof, with the reconnoisseur work beginning on the west side. Regarding Chamber of Commerce, the pet promenade recap, it was passed last Sunday, connected last Sunday at Ty Warner Park. Over 40 four-footed animals participated in the ninth annual parade. It was a very enjoyable parade, very interesting, those various categories of their various animals, and then also credit to Westmont. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. I just want to recap, before this meeting, we had a regularly-scheduled Public Works Committee meeting. First and foremost, we honored an employee, John Bushman, was his 20th anniversary of his service to the village, so we appreciate all his dedicated service over the years. And we also had our, who is here still tonight, Mike Ramsey, our Director of Public Works, 35th anniversary, so we thank him for all his years and continued service to the community as well. We had a brief update on the Quincy Streetscape project, which hopefully, we'll see some more designs, and we saw a nice drone footage of survey, so we expect to see some more upcoming updates on that coming this next year in '22. We got a quick update on the Addington Plaza, which is, you know, tied to our 100th anniversary celebration, so we hope to see most of that completed, maybe not all of it, by the celebration. Got a quick update on the Liberty Park Water Main Project. Surveying's going to be happening this fall, so hopefully, we can do a town hall meeting early '22 with all those residents and get that project moving along as well. New village fueling center, all the underground work is done, and our hope is that it'll be operational by the end of October. And then a couple other quick updates, if you haven't seen it yet, and I'm one of those folks, but I'm going to check it out tonight, the Ogden Avenue Medium Beautification Project, planted 22 trees and 1,800 shrubs and perennials. Pretty neat project to check out, a nice way to beautify that area. And I believe that is it, Mr. Mayor, but we do have our next Public Works Committee meeting is going to be on December 16th at 4:30 PM, and on Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM is the Public Works Open House. Please come, again, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, right at 155 East Burlington Avenue. Public Works Director announced a lot of events that we're going to be having for kids and families, so it sounds like a lot of fun. And that is it for Public Works, but two other quick things. I just received one of our businesses in town, King Car Wash, it was owned by the Trilla family, on October 16th, they're going to be doing a charitable day for the organization is the National Kidney Foundation of Illinois, and the Trilla family is going to be donating every dollar, every penny of every sale for that day to this organization. So that's October 16th, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and that's every dollar to it, so pretty sweet thing for business to do in town. I'll remind everybody at the next meeting, but I wanted to highlight that. And I did want to congratulate our police chief, I think another honor here with one of our directors today. I saw the county sheriff thanked him and congratulated him for being elected as the DuPage, president of the DuPage Police Chiefs Association. So another great thing for Westmont to be on the record, and it sounds like it's the first, first police chief, at least officially, that was in that role. So congrats to our police chief, and that is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, congratulations to chief. Trustee Simonovic.
I will update everyone again that we are continuing with some hiring processes here in the village. Right now, if you visit the village website, you can find that we are hiring for part-time firefighter EMT Basic and firefighter EMT Paramedic. We also have the firefighter candidate program going on, which is the year-long volunteer program to give you the education and training to work in the fire service. We also are in the various stages of the hiring process for some of the positions I've mentioned at the prior meetings, and we look forward to finishing the onboarding of those new employees. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Move back over here to Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing this evening, Environmental Improvement Committee meeting will be held on October 4th at 5:30 at the library, and then the committee will also be at the Public Works Open House this weekend, hosting a table, and they're going to talk about the food scraps, composting program, as well as other things. So come out and see them there, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little?
Thank you, Mayor. We have an Administration-Finance Committee meeting scheduled for October 7th at 4:30 right here in Village Hall. Please feel free to come out and join us for that. Under Community Events, we have a zombie pub crawl. Plans are underway for our next pub tour event. The date is set for Saturday, October 30th. It's a great way for adults to enjoy Halloween and support local businesses. Sign up online at westmonevents.com and pick your location. The next idea coming through is the Wicked West Fest. It's a month-long celebration throughout October. Details at westmonevents.com. Be sure to mark your calendars for October 23rd, which will be the Trick or Treat Trail, Pumpkin Smashing Extravaganza, Caskets on Cass Race, and the Wicked West Fest Costume Contest. Hope to see everybody there. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. And we'll go to trustee Marie Johannik-Guzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. Our next Fire Public Safety Committee meeting will be October 21st here at 4:30. Everyone is invited to attend. Mark your calendars, the fire department open house is October 2nd. Come to the Frank J. Johannik Fire Headquarters Station on South Cass Avenue for family fun, activities, displays, lunches, and more. And then Find the Truck Contest. Go online to learn more about this contest and to sign up. From September 25th through October 2nd, the fire department will hide their antique fire truck in a new location every day. Participants who find, will find the truck, take a selfie, and then send it in, and at the end of the week, we will announce who has the best score and the winners of our most sought-after 100th anniversary beanie babies. Good luck to everyone who participates. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I just have one quick item I forgot to mention, that I do have a thank you from Jill Runn that to the board. Once again, you have shown that Westmont such a special place. Thank you for the lovely plant, it was so thoughtful of you. Although Sicamore had most of her dad's heart, Westmont was his second home, and this is her dad passed away, Peter Johnson, he was real active in sports in the state, and he was 99. So I just thought I'd read that thank you from her. Moving on, any items to remove from the consent agenda? I believe I'd like the arts proclamation removed, and anything else? Seeing none, then I'd ask Manager May to please read.
Thank you. Consent agenda begins with Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held September 9, 2021. This is followed by finance ordinance number 11 in the amount of $1,936,894.87. We have two purchase orders. First one is KLF Enterprises, $36,000. This is for the demolition services over at the old street division location. Next is Schroeder Asphalt Services, $947,394.07. This is the purchase order that pairs with the contract that you already awarded for the 2021 motor fuel tax resurfacing project. That's the mass street resurfacing project. The purchase orders, together with finance ordinance number 11, is $2,920,288.94. We have three, we have two proclamations on the consent agenda, and we'll return to the Arts DuPage proclamation. Two for the consent agenda are Fire Prevention Week. Board to consider a proclamation declaring October 3rd through 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week in the village of Westmont, and resolution for the Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region. Board to consider a resolution supporting the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus 2021 Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second. Nero?
Motion made in second. Any comments? Seeing no roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we'll move on to the proclamation for the Arts DuPage Month, and I ask Manager May to please read the proclamation.
Well, I did want to point out, too, that part of the reason for pulling it off and highlighting it is we do have a representative from the Director of Arts DuPage, Debra Venenizia. Thank you. And then is here for the purposes of this proclamation, so we'll read it in its entirety. Proclamation celebrating October is Arts DuPage Month in the village of Westmont. Whereas Arts DuPage has regularly issued official proclamations to all the cities, towns, and villages in DuPage County on an annual basis, designating October as Arts DuPage Month, and whereas the arts embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and whereas the arts enrich us as individuals and play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and whereas the arts promote a better understanding of the diversified cultures within our communities and unify us regardless of age, race, and ethnicity. And whereas the arts sector in DuPage County consists of 2,272 arts-related businesses and account for 4.2% of the total number of businesses in the region, a larger share of the economy than transportation, tourism, agriculture, and construction. And whereas the arts provide full-time employment for over 15,000 workers in DuPage County, and whereas the arts improve our economy, enrich our civil life, our civic life, drive tourism and commerce, and exert a profound positive influence on the education of our children. And whereas the coronavirus has had a devastating impact on DuPage County's creative sector, forcing 99% of the arts organizations to shut down, thus placing artists among the most severely affected segment of our nation's workforce. Even in challenging times, the arts helped collectively lead us through the darkest times of the pandemic, lifting our spirits, unifying communities, and providing entertainment. Now, with the move to Phase 5 of the Illinois COVID-19 mitigation plan, the arts will play a vital role in rebuilding our communities, jump-starting the economy, and leading us back to normalcy. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Ron Gunter and the Westmont Village Board of Trustees do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Arts DuPage Month in Westmont, Illinois, and call upon our community members to celebrate and promote the arts in DuPage County.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Little?
Motion made in second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic?
Yes.
Motion passes. Debra, would you like to address us?
I'm Debbie Venetia, Director of Arts DuPage of the DuPage Foundation. Thank you, Mayor Gunter, and the members of the Board of Trustees for proclaiming October as Arts DuPage Month. Your support sends a positive message to Westmont residents and visitors that allows them to recognize the important role the creative sector plays in the community. The arts are businesses that will help us rebuild as we come out of the pandemic. They are intersectional with other industries and create and sustain an ecosystem with hospitality, tourism, transportation, and local merchants. The arts provide employment, use goods and services, and generate critical tax revenue. Just recently, the Daily Herald published an article on the impact of the Frida Kahlo Timeless Exhibit at the Cleve Carney Museum of Art at the Mackinich Arts Center at College DuPage. In its three-month run, the Frida display drew over 100,000 people from 50 states and 43 countries to DuPage County. It infused 100, or, wish, it infused $10 million into the economy, including money spent on dining, lodging, and merchandise, and it helped to heal us. Let's hope our Arts DuPage Month celebration inspires our residents. By participating in the arts, they will not only contribute to their own well-being, but they will also increase economic activity and directly impact the quality of life in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, would you like to, let's get a photo for us, or jumping in pictures?
Are copies on the projector there, Mayor?
Well, thank you. Having no unfinished business, move on to new business. A, it's the Plima Company Therapeutic Massage, 15 North Cass Avenue. Board to consider ordinances approving the following request from Plima Company, Plima Massage Boutique, to conduct a therapeutic massage business at 15 North Cass Avenue. One, increase the number of available massage establishment license by one, and issue said license to Plima Company. Two, approving a B1 development permit to, I hope I'm saying it right, Plima, Plima Company to operate a therapeutic massage business. And I'm going to turn to Deputy Liquor Commissioner Walhalla.
Evening, Mayor and Village Board. Marina Savic, who's here with me today, of Plima Company, has submitted an application for a massage establishment license. The background did not disclose a reason to deny the applicant this license. She will be the only employee-owner of Plima Company and occupy a single 100-square-foot room. The B1 development permit is required for this business, no other zoning approval is required. permit is required for this business. No other zoning approval is required. Additionally, a B1 permit was originally tabled from the August 26, 2021 Village Board meeting in order to process a concurrent approval of what they required massage license. Marina was in front of you back on August 26. She gave you a lot of her history there, so without having to repeat everything. She's looking to be opening a massage establishment license. She'll be the only employee. She's the owner/employee at 15 North Cass, the site of the previous Karma. I previously gave you a written review of everything. There's nothing that I could find in my background that would prevent the board and the mayor from issuing this license. And I asked Marina to come back, just in case you have any questions, either for the B1 and/or for the massage establishment.
I think she answered a lot of it before. So, and Tom, thank you for your background and information. We do need two motions. I'd ask for a motion for number one, increase the number of available massage established license by one.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. On to questions. Is there anybody here who'd like to comment?
I would just like to thank you for coming back in this evening. So, thank you very much.
Thanks. No, thanks for having me.
If seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion passes. I need a second motion approving a B1 development permit for Plymouth, Plymouth Company to operate a therapeutic massage business.
Motion to approve, Guzzo.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. Any comments from nowhere? I'd call for a roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
And trustee Little.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. And you said you want to open?
No, I mean, I just, I want to open as soon as possible. I have to reach out.
Okay. Okay. We just approved it.
Before the business license is issued, and I don't know if we got inspections before, but she's spoken to the fire chief about what's needed for the fire department part. But for the business license to be issued, she has to pass all the code enforcement and other inspections, and also the requirements of the massage establishment license as well. So, hopefully sooner than later. Okay.
Well, good luck and welcome. Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. New business B. B1 permit for medical clinic at 16 West Burlington Avenue. Board to consider ordinance approving a B1 development permit for Burlington Health Systems LLC to operate a medical clinic at 16 West Burlington Avenue. And I'm going to turn either to the manager, May, or attorney Zemanek for this one.
I can introduce us, and Dr. Hussein's, you know, with us this evening as well. Dr. Hussein wishes to operate a behavioral health clinic on the ground floor of the recently renovated property he owns at 16 West Burlington. I wanted to point out, back in March, you, it was ordinance 29 of this year, reclassified medical clinics from a special use to a permitted use in the B1 district. So, therefore, no additional zoning approvals are required, just the B1 permit approval here tonight. And then, doctor?
Yeah, there is a great need for behavioral health. And we have a lot of psychiatrists and behavioral health clinics in Naperville and Hinsdale, but almost non-existent here in this area, especially in downtown Westmont. So, I will be providing the needed services here in this area.
The building looks great. And are you just, are you renting the upstairs?
Yeah, is the both units are rented.
Great. Do I have a motion to approve?
I was going to ask a question. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Will you be the only physician providing services at the clinic?
At this time, I'll be the only physician, and hoping as progress, I could add any therapist, social worker, or any other person who wants to join me. But initially, I'll be the only one at this time.
Any other? I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. Anybody comments, questions? Any additional?
I thought Amy made a motion. Did you make a motion?
No, she had a question.
No, I asked a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now, I need to know who did.
Bruce and Marie.
And Linda. Bruce and Linda.
Linda, I'm sorry.
Linda was first, and then Bruce?
No, first.
Bruce was first.
Okay. Got it. Sorry about that.
Roll call.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Doctor, how soon do you think you'll have the business open?
I'm hoping, I mean, I already have the insurance, small practice insurance and all that. I'm hoping October, end of October. I need to get the furniture and set up all that. I'm hoping soon.
Okay. Well, we just approved this, so good luck.
Thank you. Really thank you for offering the opportunity.
New business C, awarded bid proposal, 2021 Addington Plaza Project. Board to consider ordinance awarding the bid proposal from Vixen Construction for Village's 2021 Addington Plaza Project and authorizing a contract consistent with the bid documents. Public Works Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. The village accepted bid proposals from three contractors for the 2021 Addington Plaza Project. The low bidder was Vixen Construction with a little bid of $875,000. Addington Plaza is the first step in the larger Quincy Streetscape project. We will be dedicating the plaza in the memory of former mayor and trustee James Addington on Wednesday, November 10th, as part of our 100th anniversary celebration. Staff does recommend awarding this contract to Vixen Construction.
Do I motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. Questions? Anybody? Questions, comments? And this is all tied into the Quincy Street renovations.
Correct. Yep, this is the first step. And then, you know, next year, we'll be moving to try to do the whole first block.
Okay.
It's the first two steps, actually. So, we had phasing plans before, but there was, this is the combination of the, as much as we can, you know, get developed by the November anniversary.
Okay. November the 10th, this will be dedicated?
Yes, sir.
And we were originally going to do it Sunday, which would have been Jim's birthday, but because of the, everything, we waited till the, our actual birthday.
Correct.
So, any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on. Any miscellaneous items that, seeing none? I do need to ask the board for a quick executive session, and that would be for the purchase of property for the use of the village pursuant to Section 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act. Can I have a motion to, for that?
Motion for that, Simonovic.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. Adjourned to executive session. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
I'll have another motion.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
All right. I failed to, well, need another motion yet. The executive session also will cover collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees pursuant to Section 2C2 of the Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
I can do that one, too.
Mm-hmm. Second, Nero. Roll call, please.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Just to explain, anything, and there's only certain issues you can go to executive session, and you need to make it announced. And I missed half of that. So, at this point, we are going to adjourn executive session. There will be no further business when we come out of it, and then the regular meeting would be adjourned. So, thank you for coming.